Seven o'clock, I'll follow this meeting to four. Please rise for the pledge.
My pledge is to the flag. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, but there will be no like chatter enough and the meeting is being audiotaped. The first number three in our meeting is approve the minutes. I'm asked for someone to approve the minutes of the February 17th, and the March 4th, 2021 Capitol Projects. How many, she dancing with? By everything?
He's trying to make you minutes in that cap.
The first question can be on the full minutes if you'd like. Vote on that and then take.
First vote will be on the school committee minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anamis. Second will be the motion to approve the Capitol Project Subcommittee Meeting by Rockland. Second by Norwell. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Something we do not have tonight. Any reports from any other committees? Sure that we voted on the?
Actually, we can do treasures and then I'd be happy to update on some of these.
Fact balances during the end of February 28th, $5.6 million in our operating account. We have 824,000. We have savings account for future use. Page two is our revenues for the market. It's not a cycle of revenues for our member assessments. So the only revenues that we received were some miscellaneous income along with some Chapter 78 in the state that comes in every month. That would keep, we did receive a couple of payments. So second half non-district tuition monies, we got monies from Dax Breeding and Marfield during the course of February. They get so they get bill up February 1st for their second half of the tuition. So overall, revenues are strong and as expected, so. While page, page three, we have our expenses for the month. The total bottom line is a little over a million dollars of expenses in our operating account. Again, large is always, as always, the salary line item. And health insurance is always a big one as well. But other than that, things are going great. We've through the process of Tricia again, Tricia's doing a great job with payroll side things. She's happy the bike season's pretty much over because of all the scenarios she ran. She did a fabulous job helping Tom with all the numbers. And Jeanine's doing a great job with all the processing of all the warrants and getting sure the bills are going to pay quicker than ever. So everything's getting out the mail. And so we're very appreciative right now. The input of the business office. So that's the report for.
Chapter. We have a motion to accept the present. I'll second it. Sent in by Whitman. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anamis on this thing. It's unanimous.
Captain Plymouth County, we cycled through and did a second, a fourth round of billing to our member towns in our district, in the other towns that have suit in our district. We, we pretty much captured the expenses from December through February, bundled them up, made copies of all the invoices in March with the help of Crystal and Joe. A great job. They've been posting stuff on the website and password protected the link to all of our towns and town managers, yeah, treasurers and they're going to back. So we've just billed the fourth time before our PPG reimbursement from the whole town. So that's how it was set up through the original app is that only the towns have access to the money. So we have to funnel through. We, so our spreadsheet. Go through member towns and non-member towns. And so we just send them a note. Moment and here's your percentage of reimbursement that we're expecting. Don't ask any questions. We get our reimbursement, some towns, you know, they ask for clarification. But overall, it's been, it's been, now that we're in our fourth cycle of sending bills, hopefully this will be a lot smoother. Again, there's some bumps in the road the first time and the second time, third time went relatively smoothly and this one should hopefully be. And again, it's all due to the town accounts because they are, the town treasurers and town accounts, they have to submit this information, they've uploaded and give it to some of the county along with their towns' information as well. So it is, it is very much of a laborious paperwork process to get everything out. Again, we do service towns as well, then I'm in Plymouth County. So we have to go directly towards those towns such as, you know, Weymouth and Cohasset and so forth.
There's nothing from the chairman tonight. Capitol Project Subcommittee?
Mr. Chairman, on behalf of the Subcommittee, appreciate their continued efforts, a lot of work during this school year. The first item which could have fallen under my report as well is really just a debt authorization update. I want to thank members for taking their time to join me at various meetings as we're making an effort to talk with finance committees and boards of selectmen about the proposed warrant article. I think the presentations that we're able, the materials we are able to provide them in advance allows people to digest a complicated topic. And I feel as though the questions and the feedback we're getting have been constructive and positive. As we go into the second half of this month, we will have meetings with Norwell's Advisory Committee on the 23rd, Hanover's Advisory Committee on the 31st. And then we will have both Abington's Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen in the month of April, the first and the last week of April. So it's great to see that our communities want to learn more about the proposed article. When you see an article that is seeking $18.9 million, it warrants an explanation. And I'm glad that our towns are asking for more information. And, and I thank Jim for his continued work in helping to package together the various scenarios involved with how we might phase in the financing. I will not go through the presentation for the benefit of those in this meeting tonight because you've seen, you've certainly seen the materials, but it does offer a comprehensive plan of how we would handle working with those funds. What I would ask the committee, what I would ask the committee in the next day or two, it will, I'll, I'll reach out or I'll ask Susan to reach out, would be to check for your availability because I think the next action, it feels anticlimactic to say it, but the next action we need to undertake is to actually vote this matter officially to get that 60-day clock ticking. We know as of now, barring something that changes that perhaps, you know, we will, I will double check this, but as of now, our eight town meetings seem to be falling between April 12th and May 24th. So anytime after March 24th, we're this full committee to vote in the affirmative, this debt authorization amount, that would start a safe 60-day window for all of our towns with their published town meetings. So what I'm going to be asking you will be what your availability would be for a brief, all remote meeting with a very limited agenda with the priority item being to take a vote on this authorization for the, for the amount that the, the 18,960,537. But we don't want to do that too early because that would start a clock ticking and we don't want to leave towns in a complicated situation where they don't have an opportunity to have it on their water. As it stands now, all of the towns are moving forward to put this on their warrant. That's, that's a good first step. So at some point, I would, I would envision us looking to set up a meeting in the last week of March or at the very latest, the first week of April. For, for Jack and Situate, whose town meeting is April 12th, Situate has been very responsive. They have it on the warrant. So I think even if a vote were taken just days before Situate's town meeting and a, and a notice were sent out to the Boards of Selectmen, this is not a surprise there. So we can talk about what day will work for members of the committee. And then I'd ask you to take up that matter at that time. And thank you, Mr. Chairman. And in terms of the, the next item, the window project update, members of the Capitol Project Subcommittee met just before this meeting tonight in order to hear from our owner's project manager, Dan Palata. Dan's, Dan's firm coordinated the bid process for the 1992 window replacement. There were two bids received, only one was a responsive bidder. And the Subcommittee voted for Northeast Energy with a base bid of $637,200. And so what we will be, what we'll be doing with that action is we will contract with Northeast Energy. If there are any small expenses prior to the start of the next fiscal year, those will be handled out of this fiscal 21 budget or previously encumbered money for building repairs. And then with the passage of the budget, we will have the bulk of the construction work done as, as we wanted to, not all schools in session, but, but this summer. So that's the plan going forward. We're, we're happy with the results of where those numbers came in. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Does anybody have any questions on what Tom just spoke of? No, seeing none. It goes right past the Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget meeting updates, I'm going to, I'm going to suggest that I would already kind of wrap that into the, to the earlier comment. When we're talking to finance committees, we're spending more time talking about the debt authorization, but certainly we're also going over the fiscal 22 budget. I think that in general, the assessment numbers have come in as best as can be expected. My characterization is it's a, it's a lean budget, an under 2% increase with an emphasis on our last hurrah of capital for that, as you know, for, for that window project. So we've supplied our communities with all of the necessary information. And as I said, we'll continue to meet with finance or advisory committees as we go deeper into, deeper into margin into early April. The second item under my report deals with an update on my, my goals for the year, which is in your packet. Most of these goals are pandemic related, as you can imagine. We know that the school has done very well under these circumstances. I look forward to giving updates on students achieving and attaining industry-recognized credentials later in the year. But the pandemic has not prevented our students from getting access to those technical credentials, which is absolutely essential. And so I'm grateful to the teachers and administrators who are making sure that that's not an obstacle for the students. Third item I have is to let you know that in an effort to expand programming instruction in our computer and pro tech program, there is, there's a textbook on Python programming that CIT program has recommended to me. And last item on my report, Mr. Chairman, is to turn it over to Mark and Sandy for some administrator updates. What's been going on since the last time we met?
Thank you, everyone. I'll start by doing my best to channel Kate Ryan, our student body representative, and let you know that the student council is active. They are working towards a spring prom type activity depending on quota restraints or restraints at that time, the outdoor event. Under tents, we will, the plane is in the works and if we can get approval on the date that's here, we will soldier on with that activity. I want to give a shout out to Dave Brady, senior, who's really done a nice job audio taping announcements every morning because played in classrooms so that even students who are home can hear the announcements. He's done a really nice job for that. So the things are getting back to fairly normal, which is exciting. Mark will give a little bit more information on what the school is doing to bring us back to normal, but let me just tell you about some of the normal things our kids are doing. A nod to Councilor Stavza Harakar and Joe Manera, supporting students in their post-secondary places. We have students heading off Marines, we have students heading off to the Army, and we have at least one Air Force candidate likely to be confirmed. We have students going to Wentworth, accepted at Wentworth, Bridgewater University, Mass Maritime, UMass Durham, Salem State, Mass College and Pharmacy, as well as member of graphic students accepted to art schools such as Maine College of Art, Savannah College of Art, Design and Mass Art, Savannah College of Art Design, Mass Art, and Parsons School of Design in New York City. So good stuff happening for our students. Very exciting. A nod to Amy Dow and her heard work doing with proof it. We operated admission to 127 students, 120 of them accepted. We are ready for our second round within a week and we'll take another 40 students later to, for the class of 2025 with 160 students. A nod to Keith Boyle, his leadership with Nicole and his supported by Nicole and Paul Bello, doing an excellent job getting 83 seniors out, 21 juniors out and averaging, rounded up to $314,000 earned to date. Credit to Mike Hurdin and all of our student athletes and coaches. We have 196 students participating in the fall two athletic season. We're offering participating in the following sports, varsity JV football, varsity JV soccer, varsity ice hockey, varsity golf, cross country, varsity JV and freshman volleyball, as well as cheer. Our game opener is tomorrow, the football. I would say come on over, but I'm not sure that that's accurate. So stay tuned on that. But great stuff. The atmosphere in school is definitely getting back to a more normal.
Thank you. Let me just follow up. You're more than invited to come to the football game tomorrow. It is going to be, we're going to, we're supposed to be Friday night under the lights, but because of the rain, it's still, we don't want to destroy the field on the first game. So we moved it to tomorrow afternoon to try and heat it up before most of the rain comes. So you're more than welcome to stop by. We are limiting the number of visitors to two to each player or each cheerleader to try and keep that number down and socially distance. So that's the criteria we're using right now for, at least for outdoor matches. Sandy did mention, we are looking at the future. We're already into September in a lot of places. We rolled out to the staff yesterday in a staff meeting, the nuts and bolts of a very, a very, very strong schedule with Tom's leadership. I think we're being able to meet our limited space requirements, but still managed to make sure that we have our students' needs in mind, fulfilling our mission, making sure they have the, what they need to either go into the trades upon graduation or as, for Sandy to go off to college or the military. So we are making sure that they meet all those criterias. Follow up on trying to get students ready for September, we've kind of gone back and we've added late buses, so students can now stay after school. To take up on a thread, Sandy said over a third of our students are now after school for athletics or clubs that are meeting in person. They're taking a 3:30 bus home or a 4:30 bus if they need it. Very often, the parents are doing a great job and very supportive. They are picking their students up after athletic events. So I can't, cannot commend them, I have to commend them on what they're doing there. We started M-Pass tutoring sessions at the school. So we're really getting back to the normal things we would normally be doing up September. We're going to start tightening up on during the winter months when the windows were open, we were allowing students to wear hats to keep themselves warm and stuff. April 1st, we're going to start taking those away. We're going to just start easing back into the school, easing back into the environment. We're looking at more ways to bring students in. We'll probably be announcing that in the next few days or so. So students will be in school in person in front of their teachers for longer periods of time or more often. So all that is happening. As we know, Corona, I got my first shot this afternoon. We all know, everybody in this room knows what kind of leader Tom is. Last night, maybe early this morning, from what I hear, he signed up 40 of our staff members for Corona testing. And I just have to commend him. He has been a leader throughout all of this and pushing and making sure we're doing the best we can for our students. And on behalf of the staff and everybody, I just have to say thank you to Tom.
It's daylight savings time. I woke up at 2:00 AM. I woke up at 2:00 AM and CBS and CBS was ready to do business. So we were, we had the data ready to go. So my wife checked on me at 3:30 and I said, I'm all right.
That's my name.
So thank you, Mark. Yes.
Yep, question to Mark. First of all, I got both my shots.
Good for you.
I'm all set. What are we looking for in the future for, for our graduation?
So we are looking at, we have a graduation committee. Let me start there.
I'm just curious, because it's a two-months wait.
No, no, it's, no, it's not really. Whatever we're doing, we need to do very soon. We are looking at event here on campus, the weekend of June 5th and 6th, probably out to the football field, using the stands, being able to socially distance. We're going to work it a lot like we worked last year's event, where we're going to have one car, one spot, one place. This is where your family can sit and we limited number of tickets. I'm working with this Dixon from the Hanover Department of Public Health to, to make sure we're following all the criteria they need, but that's where we're at right now. So we're looking at something on the morning of June 5th, no, the morning of June 6th, I'm sorry, that's a Saturday, or the afternoon of June 7th would be the right date.
And you're saying cars, they won't be on the field?
No, no, but well, so we have limited parking.
Right.
So we're going to assign Johnny Jones is going to be at parking spot 22, Susie Sunshine's at parking lot 23, so we could, parking spot 23, so we could control the number of cars and be nice to our neighbors and who, you know, are very supportive of us. So we, we're trying to support them at the same time.
It'll be interesting.
Mark, another question about.
Yes, please.
I'm hearing teachers are going to have an opportunity to get vaccinated.
We have about, we have about a third of them have at least their first run. Some of them were lucky enough to get the Johnson to Johnson and they're done. We do have, one of our lovely spreadsheets tells us where everybody is and what dates they're going and when they go back and things like that. So we are recording all that information, but yeah, the vast majority are in the pipeline to get a shot if they haven't already got one.
So it's still with the teachers to try and make arrangements on their own that happen?
Yes, yes, I think it is, as we said, it's gotten 40 of them. I, it's somewhere around 40, but everybody has one as an appointment. So we're working on that.
I received a call from Phoenix Lodge of the Masons thanking the student council, I believe that is it?
Yeah, it was the National Honor Society.
National Honor Society, I guess, that for their donation of used clothing over Lodge, which we, we do did as a community service. And it was very much appreciated what they did and they want to both be honored as usual. So if you could please pass that on.
I, well, they filled two automobiles to go over to the Phoenix Lodge here. So it was impressive.
Yeah, it was amazing. It really was. Thank you again.
So Mark, can we try to vote prom?
There is some talk about prom. We are waiting on guidance from the Department of Public Health. We're looking more at a semi-formal kind of stance. I do not want people going out buying gowns, succedos for something that might not happen. So we're looking at something a little less for seniors only after graduation. So we've included the seniors in the discussion, we've included parents in the discussion. We have a, I have a little prom committee that I meet with. And so they're on board, they understand what we're trying to do. We're trying to make sure that we're delivering something we can deliver. We don't want to over-deliver and then not be able to do that. So we want to make sure it's something we can define. And we're looking to get bagged sandwiches from area businesses so we could just hand the kids the sandwich. We don't have to worry about buffets or any of that kind of stuff. So we worked on that stuff. But June 18th would be that day.
Is the idea it would be an outdoor?
Oh, yes, definitely an outdoor. I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Nick. It would definitely be an outdoor event. We're looking at renting a dance floor and that would be about it right now.
We get back to normal soon as we can.
Yeah, well, that's what we're trying to do.
No joke.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, if I could just piggyback a little bit on what Mark said relative to the, the schedule. Over the, between now and the next time we meet, there will be plenty of media attention about schools coming back full time. There'll be conversation about elementary schools coming back, middle schools. So several points to, just to emphasize here. First of all, they, the state has not set a date where it expects high schools to come back. The state is taking the position that as of a certain date, the only kind of learning is either going to be all in person or families can still keep their kids remote. So the, what you know, you, what you've heard from us all year is that we've been ahead of the curve in terms of the percentage of time we've been in the building. We're all very proud of that and we think that we've stopped a considerable amount of learning loss because of it. We will be, we will be rolling out additional time in person. We're finalizing those details about having full shop days and at least another in-person day for our older kids in grades 11 and 12. That will be the next incremental step. But what I do want to point out is that as you see other schools perhaps coming back, I do not believe that we have the capacity to do much more than what we're about to do. So we don't have enough classrooms. We have about 28 classrooms in the building. Most of those classrooms are too small to hold a class size at a three-foot distance. We've been a three-foot school since the beginning. That has helped us immensely, especially in our classrooms. So we'll report out on this again in April. We'll, we'll certainly keep you apprised. But if the safety guidance stays where it is, and if that's what the experts say, then so be it, with six-foot distancing in the lunchrooms or the gym or the hallways or wherever kids are being fitted in schools across the commonwealth, if that stays the same and if the three-foot distancing stays the same, people have worked very hard to get to this next step. We believe it is safe and that we have the transportation flexibility now to bring all of our children in on a shop day for a full pre-COVID regular day. So that'll be a good addition for the momentum and the pacing of a shop day. But the academic day, we've probably reached our limit. Now, the way, the way the state is talking, and I'm going to speak to the guidance that is out for elementary and middle school, if an elementary school or a middle school doesn't think it can come back with all of its children full time, they, there's an expectation of a parent survey to find out where parents are and all of this, which we have done. There's also an expectation that you have to file for a waiver. And that before a waiver would be granted to allow something less than everybody back, it'd have to be a site visit from somebody from the department. So on the day that the guidance came out, I did send Desi an email just saying, ooh, pick me, I'd like a visit. And, and they did respond promptly and I appreciate it. And they also acknowledged they're not even thinking of, it's not true. They're not, they're not doing anything with high schools now because they've got to focus on waivers and accommodations from elementary and middle. So what am I saying? We may be very close to the end of our maximum safe capacity, which would be three days in person on an academic week and two days fully engaged and remote, as well as a full in-person, full-day shop week. If we could do more, we, we certainly would. We will have students outside, we will put the tents back up, but none of that is going to allow us the capacity to bring all of our kids back every day full time. So I'm guessing over the next four weeks before we meet again, there'll be more information and I'll communicate with you in between. But that's my forecasting right now, that we're going to document that we're doing the best we can. We're going to welcome some technical advice from the state if they want to perhaps give us some suggestions, if there are other ways. Nothing wrong with looking at it from another perspective, but the math doesn't seem to work. math doesn't seem to work. Again, popular school, you know, not planning for a pandemic, lots of classrooms kind of snug. And that's what we have to do. So everyone has done so well, administrators, counselors, and teachers, to make this work. And what I love about the conversations we're having with faculty is everybody is on the same page about wanting more kids back in the building, more. No, no dissent on that whatsoever. If we can get them back safely, they want, the teachers wanted them yesterday. And so what I'm describing to you right now, this next phase of bringing them back, is something we will roll out and it will be fully implemented probably by early April. And I'll, we'll, we'll refine it. We just have to do a little more pressure testing on some of the scheduling. But I don't want you to be disappointed if you're seeing schools coming back full-time. This would be our reasoning that I'd explain to the state why I think we've reached our limit.
Well, how do you think those things will be starting up next year?
Well, Dan, the one, the one factor, it, first of all, transportation guidance being relaxed and safe is a big, big deal. We couldn't do what I was just describing to you. We're not for that. But I do think that the three-foot distancing rule is going to be the next hurdle for us. Because if that by September is not relaxed, then we're going to have to take a hard look this summer about, well, I guess I would make the point, Dan, that we may not, we may not have the capacity to come back full-time if those safety guidelines are still in place. I think a mask requirement will still be in place in the fall. We just saw on the news earlier today, as the governor has rolled out other waves of when people are eligible at certain age levels. So I'm definitely, that's definitely a talking point for me. We are building a schedule based on a full-time, regular return. And I I certainly, certainly want that to to be the case. Uh so I'm not sure. If if the if the safety guidelines don't change, then I don't know that we can do that.
Sorry, I meant to ask you, Julie, do we have any point on how students did at skills?
Skills, we we actually did very well. We had thirty-nine medals at skills. So we're sending off, um we had a hundred and fifteen students go. We came up with thirty-nine medals. Uh so we do have a, the skills is split this year. Some of, some of the presentations, some of the testing is done in-house. Some of them, they actually have to go to the site on for one whole day. So we are sending, and I just came across my desk this morning, Mr. Mahoney, we're sending about twenty-two students away for that one day to do their testing while the other one will be in-house to test.
For the stage?
Yeah, for this day.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for that extended, those extended remarks.
All right, um we have a donation from Triangle Engineering for the medal pack. Do I have a motion to uh accept this donation?
I make the mo, I make a motion.
Okay, you can second. Uh we have Abington and that was
Hanson.
Hanson. Any discussion on the donation? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Motion carries. Warrants.
Sixteen, eighteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, and eighteen, totaling one million two hundred and seven thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars sixty-three cents.
Second by Norwell. Any discussion on the on the warrants? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Request for action. Does anyone have a request for any action or any specific special? Seeing none. That's the salvage.
Motion to adjourn. No disrespect.
That is mine. Sorry, guys. I can never look up. That's what I'll have to tell. By Norwell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.